At 5:30 PM, we'll start by acknowledging that we're in hybrid status. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings. We may take public comment through the Zoom platform. However, public participation is not guaranteed via Zoom if that platform malfunction's for any reason. Now we will take comments from the public on closed session items. There is no public in person. Hello, public, are any of you there on Zoom? No, none of you are on Zoom, so we will adjourn to closed session. I reconvene this meeting at 6:04 PM. Thank you all for your patience. And President Pahn, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? All right, to start, I'm going to open up a public hearing on contract reopeners with PFT and the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School districts. I have to bang the gavel to do that. It's real. So if you have any public comment, if you could bring cards up or put your name in the chat. And then Matthew, are you gonna talk about what this is for the public?
So with every, every year, we do contract reopeners with our labor partners. And we have attached to the board agenda our sort of our interests that we're quote unquote "sunshining" or bringing to light. And the Petaluma Federation of Teachers has also attached their sunshine proposals. And so if there's any public comment, we welcome it, welcome it right now. And then we're going to be getting negotiations starting next week.
All right, I see nothing in the chat, no one rushing up to fill out a card. So I will close that public hearing and, ooh, open another public hearing about the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials per Ed Code 6119.
Great, so just a little bit of background on that. Back in 2000, there was a class action lawsuit, Williams versus California, which led to a package of new laws enacted that impacted all public schools and really brought about more accountability to school sites around many different areas. One area is the instructional materials and access to textbooks. And, and this public hearing is really giving the opportunity for, for public to engage with our district around instruction materials and textbooks and anything in regards to that matter, as well as informing them that the school sites have done their certification around sufficiency of instructional materials and have all certified that their sites are sufficient with the materials. And forthcoming at the next board meeting, we'll bring forth a board resolution making that statement as well.
Great, thank you. If there's any public comment, if you're in person, please bring one of the slips of paper up to us or put your name in the chat if you're here on Zoom. All right. Seen no one, I'm going to close that public hearing and move on to the best part. And we're going to start with Students of the Month from Kennelworth Junior High School.
Kennelworth Junior High is proud to introduce our September Student of the Month, Jaden Serta. Jaden was chosen for Student of the Month because he's one of Kennelworth's kindest, hardworking, and most inspirational students. As Jaden entered Kennelworth as a seventh grader, he was in active remission with a battle in cancer in 2020. As he started off his spring semester in 2023, Jaden and his family learned of a new growth during a routine MRI. Throughout the process of diagnosis, surgery, and recovery, Jaden continued to maintain a 4.0 GPA. While completing work from home and the hospital, he continually expressed his strong desire to be back at school, in class with his friends. Jaden returned to campus as soon as he was able and jumped right back in with the full academic load of his classes. Jaden is humble, determined, and epitomizes resiliency. As Jaden's teacher, Jaden's, as Jaden's teacher couldn't be more impressed with this young man. Mr. Quintua from history class says Jaden is extremely hard worker who has earned respect of his peers and his staff. As he can be counted on to turn in exceptional work, paying close attention to detail, and oftentimes goes beyond what is expected. As Jaden plays, Jaden has been playing football with the Petaluma Panthers since he was nine years old. Jaden is dedicated and enthusiastic team member with his position as defensive tackle. Jaden's favorite hobbies include fishing at a local pond with his family and friends and heading out to Mullis Bay to fish for a stingray with his dad and brother. After Kennelworth, Jaden plans to attend Casa Grande High School and is looking forward to playing football as a gaucho. Kennelworth is incredibly proud of this exemplary young man and knows he will be successful in anything he chooses to do. Congratulations, Jaden.
And I think we have Jaden on Zoom. Hey, Jaden, congratulations. We want to give a shout out to your friends and family too for all of their support. So thank you all.
Student of the Month, September 2023. Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our September Student of the Month, Josette Holly. Josie was chosen as Student of the Month because she is one of Kennelworth's finest students. Josie is recognized by her teachers as being one of the most empathetic students in their classes, who always creates a better environment for those around her. Josie is an active member of Kennelworth's leadership class and demonstrates academic excellence in all subjects. Josie's teachers were universal in their praise of this fine student. Ms. Fahy, Josie's physical education teacher, shared, "Josie is an all-star in all aspects of the classroom. She's an outstanding student who takes great pride in not only schoolwork, but school spirit as well." Josie sets the bar high for herself and she is one of, and she is a great role model to her peers. She is kind and caring and willing to lend a gentle helping hand to anyone who may need it. She is well-liked and respected by her classmates. She brings a great energy and joy to every lesson, and it is an honor to have her in my class.
Not only is Josie a conscientious and outstanding student, but she is also a talented gymnast. Josie began gymnastics lessons just two years ago, and only after two classes her coaches recognized her excellence, inviting her to the Future Stars Invite Only Team. In her free time, Josie enjoys spending time with her family, supporting her twin brother in athletic events, boogie boarding in balonas, and crabbing in Bodega Bay. After high school, Josie would like to work at a gym as a gymnastics coach, offering her expertise to the next generation. Josie envisions herself attending Sonoma State University and plans to one day own a flower shop where she continued to spread joy to her community.
Congratulations, Josie. And while you take a picture with Ellen Webster, our school board member, can I have Josie's family and friends stand? We want to cheer for you too. Great, thank you to our presenters from Kennelworth, and congrats again to Josie and Jaden. Next up, we're going to do Petaluma High School.
Hi, guys. My name is Drake Schumaker. For those of you who don't know me, because I see a lot of familiar faces. I'm a senior at Petaluma High and also ASB Vice President, so you'll see me a lot this year. And yeah, so I'll be presenting soon in the month. And first up is Jordan Beardsley. So Jordan Beardsley is a Petaluma High senior who is involved in several activities around campus. She's an active member in eight clubs. Prominent ones include Art of Noise Club, Environmental Club, and Friday Film Club. She is also president of Trojan Student Ambassadors on campus, whose goal is to boost student engagement at PHS. Jordan has been a member of ASB for all four years of high school and a link leader for the past two years. She dreams of going to a four-year university somewhere in the Pacific Northwest to study environmental science and biology. Outside of school ambitions, Jordan is involved in music and photography and is drawn to the outdoors. She also works weekends at Mr. Mom's Cafe in Petaluma. Jordan is also co-leading a group called Value Life, Not Violence in Santa Rosa, which aims to lower the amount of violence in schools and give students more healthy ways to cope, outlets to resort to. She wants to thank her family for always supporting her and helping her reach her full potential. She encourages everyone to get outside and connect with nature or those around you. Jordan feels recognized and honored to receive these awards in hopes that she and all of her fellow seniors will enjoy and make the most of their last years at Petaluma High School.
Congratulations, Jordan. Do we have Jordan's friends and family here in the audience?
And then next up, we have Josue Juarez. So Josue is a senior at Petaluma High School. He enjoys being an active member in the PHS community and is involved in a wide range of activities on campus, including participating in track, cross-country, and helping to plan various events for the clubs he's a member in. Josue is committed to giving back to his school community and supports various student groups and campus initiatives through his work in ASB, BSA, bilingual student ambassadors, and Link Crew. Outside of PHS, he spends his time doing taekwondo, which he's been practicing for 10 years. His favorite part of the sport is competing and being able to teach what he loves to other people. He also enjoys spending quality time with his family and is so thankful for his parents because without them, he would have not been given the opportunities he has.
Congratulations, Josue. Josue's friends and family, if you're in the audience, do you want to stand up and let us cheer you? Awesome, thank you, Petaluma High. Next up, we have Casa Grande High School.
Good evening, my name is Rona Hanson, and I'm the Casa Grande ASB President. Our first Student of the Month is Anna Maria Robertson. Anna Maria is an ambitious senior at Casa Grande High School who has followed an academically rigorous path since childhood, taking a variety of AP honors and JC classes to obtain the best academic experience possible. With her favorite classes being calculus and computer science, she hopes to dual major in math and either software engineering or computer science, and has aspirations to eventually become either a programmer or an intellectual property lawyer. While she loves what she learns in the classroom, she is also passionate about sports, being a varsity basketball player since freshman year. Having played with many of her teammates from anywhere from five to 10 years, she is very committed to her athletic team and even hopes to play in college. Beyond the classroom, she is dedicated to whatever volunteer activities and outreach programs in which she can participate through her church. Additionally, she loves reading from an eclectic variety of genres and enjoys spending time with her friends and family. Congratulations, Anna Maria.
Congratulations, Anna Maria. Do we have your friends and family in the audience?
Our next Student of the Month is Raymond Wong. Raymond is a current senior at Casa Grande who wants to major in environmental science or public policy in the future. At school, he enjoys just learning, whether it be calculus, history, environmental science, or any of the other classes offered at Casa. He also runs the Environmental Advocacy Club and is a wrestler at Casa, with him being immensely proud of both. With the former, he loved working on the tree planting process after getting an $8,000 grant. And with the latter, he's loved the sport since starting it in seventh grade. His proudest achievement to date is his work with anionic exchange membrane fuel cells, with which he has found a cheaper, substitutable membrane for power generation. Outside of school, he enjoys volunteering with both Boy Scouts and various nonprofits. One of his most impactful volunteering experiences was working with a local wildfire evacuee shelter, where he got a glimpse firsthand into the devastation that environmental disasters can cause. In the future, he wants to go to college and hopefully work as an environmental consultant. Congratulations, Raymond.
And now we'll invite up Petaluma Junior High.
Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our September Student of the Month, Olivia Gerzoli. Olivia was chosen as PJHS September Student of the Month because she is driven by a love of learning. Ms. Garvey reports that Olivia gets all of her work done, and there's always seems to be lively discussion from Olivia's table in math class. She has a knack for explaining as well as listening to the ideas of others. Olivia is committed to getting the most out of any activity, whether it is a discussion or problem to be solved. Ms. Peterson shared that Olivia is a kind and warm student who works hard and helps others. Mr. Tucker remarked that Olivia is an active student who plays on the basketball team and ran track last year. When asked what she enjoys about PJHS, Olivia said that she likes to see her friends and play sports with them. Olivia proudly serves as a member of ASB. She enjoys playing soccer outside of school. Olivia is looking forward to playing sports and taking the excitement, exciting courses at Petaluma High. She is not quite sure what she wants to do after high school, but we are sure that Olivia will continue to have a positive impact no matter what. Olivia's mom had this to say about Olivia. "I'm proud of how Olivia is so independent in her studies and is determined to do well at school. She is kind and respectful to all. I am also proud that she is playing sports, making new friends, and having team spirit no matter if the team is winning or losing." Congratulations, Olivia.
Congratulations, Olivia. Do we have Olivia's friends and family in the audience?
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our September Student of the Month, Ryder Nicholas. Now, before I start, I just want to say, as well as being a great vice president, athlete, and person, he's one of my best friends. Math teacher Ms. Garvey shared Ryder is a thorough and intellectually committed student. His positive attitude and energy is a welcome addition to any class. Ryder is always willing to contribute to a class and discussion and is a friendly influential force in his math groups. Science teacher Ms. Peterson said Ryder is a hard worker who is kind and always helpful in class. PE teacher Mr. Gregg remarks that while Ryder is quiet in class, he is an incredibly fast runner and eager to participate in PE. Some of the things his parents are most proud of Ryder about are his determination, he is focused and puts in the work, he cares about doing his best inside and outside of school, for example, in academics and sports. His confidence, he wants to learn and creates new opportunities for himself. He is willing to challenge himself in new situations. His ability to be a leader, he welcomes stepping into a leadership role and will bring along others with him versus telling them what to do. His character, he is kind and cares about being a good person and friend. He likes to make people smile and laugh. He is helpful and shows respect for others, from students to adults to family. Ryder had this, Ryder had this to say. "One thing I enjoy most about PJHS is our school spirit and how inclusive and kind everybody is, from the students to the teachers to the staff. I have a lot of great friends and I'm having fun meeting new people. In Ms. Fush's leadership class, I am learning how to be a strong leader and positive role model. I also appreciate being part of school events like PCS board meetings, orientation, back-to-school night, and all rallies. I am most looking forward to meeting new people and playing sports in high school. I would also like to continue to be in leadership. After high school, I am interested in going to Oklahoma University and playing sports because it is a D1 college." Congratulations, Ryder.
Congratulations, Ryder. Do we have Ryder's friends and family in the audience? Thank you to our presenters, to our Students of the Month, to our families and friends. I think we're going to take a two or three-minute recess so Ms. Fadegi can get her coveted picture of all of the students, and then we can let you all go back to homework and extracurriculars and all of that. Well, it was fun having public for a little while. Call this meeting back to order at 6:27, 6:28, according to Apple and Steve Jobs. Okay. Yeah, RIP Tim Cook. I don't even know who's who anymore. So now we'll take comments from the public on non-agendized items. So if you're on Zoom, feel free to put your name in the chat. Please put what subject matter you'd like to talk about, but this is anything not currently listed on the agenda, or at least not in the agenda in the future. Oh, yeah.
Is anyone on, is there anyone on Zoom?
While, while we're waiting, I will read the board comment policy. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or 20-minute limit per subject matter.
Thank you, President Pahn. Seeing no one in public and no one in the chat, I'm going to move on to adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Now I'll report out on activities and correspondence of school board members. Board members have attended the Casa Flag Football Game, the Casa Tennis Game, San Antonio and Carpe Diem Open Houses, the PEF Bash, CTE Advisory Committee, Healthy Petaluma District Board Meeting, Petaluma Blacks for Community Development Health Fair, Blue Zones Meeting. And then our student board members have gone to the Homecoming Parade, Homecoming Dance, Homecoming Football Game, Environmental Club, Bi-Pop Club, excuse me, and ASB, as well as other football games and club meetings. So we have been staying busy. Does anyone want to add anything from any of their adventures? No? Cool. Now we'll take comments from the public on consent agenda items. So again, if you're here on Zoom, please put your first and last name in the chat as well as which item on the agenda you would like to talk about. It has to be on the consent agenda, so it has to start with 12 points something. You don't need to know the number, but it needs to be one of those. I'll give it a few minutes, but I don't see too many people in the audience. "I like being boring, it's good. I like not being controversial." I like. All right, seen none. We will move on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I have a motion? Approved.
A second.
All right, do we have any questions or comments on any of the items on the consent agenda?
I'll start, I'll play the role of Maddie. I've got a few lined up here. The first one, I guess, I, let me see. No, this would be for Matthew or Tony, I think. It's the, the School Board Handbook, the revised, what am I talking about? Item 1.5. Looks great, and you know, this is in the line, we've seen this already in the first reading last time. But I wanted to give the opportunity to explain the New Goal Five, particularly the metrics. It says, you know, improvement in the dashboard by 30 points, moving from a minus 91.5 to minus 61.5, et cetera. Could you interpret those scores for the, for me and for the public?
Is that for the Goal Five?
Yeah.
I think that, that goal is by 2028 is what we need to, to move to, to get us out of differentiated assistance. And so we set that goal for the next.
But in other, in other words, the points, when you move by 30 points, it's not 30, it's not like we're negative 91.5 percentile or state average. It's, these are raw data, data points on the, on the state dashboard. So our goal is constant improvement. Of course, we'd love to get, you know, above and beyond 30 points. We should be striving, you know, as far as we can get. We, I think, I know Sarah Fountain, our Director of Special Services, and Lindsay Munn, we were working on, how, I mean, how do you, how do you, where do you place it? I mean, we are, these are, these are raw scores that we're talking about.
What's, do you know, do you recall off the top of your head the scale that this is on? Just to, just to interpret, what is minus 91.5 mean? What does that score mean? What scale is it measured?
I could probably bring that information to get more clear, but I believe it's from standard. And we can, I can get more clear definition of what that from standard means and present it the next one.
Yeah, it was just a, you know, it's, it's one of the, it's an artificial scale. I just wanted the opportunity to explain to the public what this is. But, but I, you know, the, the objectives underneath Goal Five are really clear, and I think it's the right on. I got more.
Yeah, I was about to say, I don't see anyone else jumping to press their button, so keep going.
Okay. This is items. Yeah, seven and eight. This is the independent contractor for the PE at McKinley, and then PAX, and then Valley Vista, which is, the question I have or the observation that I see is, you know, some of it's being funded by a site PTA. Others look like it's, I think Valley Vista says it's going to be funded by, from their site appropriation. Is that correct? And, and so anyway, the, you know, kudos to McKinley and PAX for being able to raise the money to, to purchase this. But, you know, this is, this gets to the issue that we've been talking about for a while now, which is about educational equity and the opportunities that are available to certain schools based upon income levels of, you know, the demographics that are being, that are present at the school. So anyway, I, am I reading correctly that Valley Vista, they're paying for the same service essentially from their site allocation? Is that right?
So, so Valley, really, Valley, McKinley, Valley Vista, and McDowell all receive, receive federal dollars. They are tied, they're Title I schools. So I don't know, I'm not sure. Good catch, because I thought all three of them are paying out of their, from, from their site PTA budget.
Okay.
But it does look like Valley Vista is going to be using some fight, some site funds to do that. And most logical place would be some supplemental funds or Title I, so it's their school-wide.
Oh, I see. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not standing in the way of these things, but it's, this is a great illustration, actually, of what we've been talking about last year at our study session on equity, you know, the role of philanthropy in our public schools, and how do we, you know, how do we make sure that it's not, you know, exacerbating inequities? And how do we get it to, to, you know, even out?
Sheldon, were you asking for like?
Sheldon, were you asking for like, exact numbers at some point?
I'm asking us to, I mean, we, we broached this topic last year when we invited P E F to come, and we reviewed with them, you know, their allocations of funds, and, 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 and we compared it to what each of our site P T As are raising and those kind of things. And we saw the numbers, and they're, uh, I guess what I'm asking is, uh, we need to address those inequities that, and this is a great example where one site is going to be spending down their site allocation for a same service that another school can afford to pay for through P T A. You know, kudos to them, but we, we need to work, we need to work on thinking about how to make this a little bit more equitable.
And do you, and just to add on to that, we're talking with the Valley Vista P T A. I mean, I went to a meeting or two, I, I think it was last year or the year before. Some concerns around, you know, raising, raising enough funds to help what they, what they typically have been able to support, not being able to support as much. And of course, the pandemic was challenging for everyone, including our P T As. But even as we come forward with this, like I said, good catch, because I didn't, I didn't even, I thought that they were, they were all going to be P T A funded. I mean, it's, it's eleven thousand seven hundred ninety seven dollars out of, out of the site budget for Valley Vista, out of, probably out of their title one or supplemental. And they do receive, you know, some funds that, that some of the other schools don't receive because of their title one status and the number of the demographics of their, but, but it is, it is a great illustration of what some schools are able to afford with their, you know, with their P T A backing, and what other schools are not able to afford with their P T A, from their, from their P T A budget, so.
Yeah, we had, uh, you know, through all of last year in our Equity Committee, we have been talking about this issue. And we were getting ready to gear up to start measuring, you know, what kind of, uh, you know, opportunity, differences and opportunities that come about at our schools as a result of differing levels of P T A fundraising, those kind of things. But we hadn't gotten there, so that's something that maybe our Equity Committee can pick up this year. Uh, I think I'm still on it.
Yeah, definitely bringing back some way of weighing in on site allocation. And we can't control what P T As do, but we can respond accordingly. Grant, McNear, Cherry Valley, how, do they offer P E teachers? How are they funded?
So the, so these aren't P E teachers, this is a P E, it's a, it's a professional service agreement for what's called the National Academy of Athletics. So everyone does it a little bit differently. Now Pendrove has a, someone that they bring in. Their grant has someone that they bring in, is typically a, someone that's on a professional expert agreement. The teachers are bringing their class to get some of the supplemental, supplemental time. And if teachers are, it's on the, the teacher's credential to be there within earshot of what's going on.
Okay, um, any other questions on any other agenda items? On the consent agenda at least.
I just want to thank Sheldon for bringing that up.
Right, student board members, any, anything you want to add to any of the consent items? You don't have to. This is not pressure. All right, all in favor of passing the consent agenda? I, any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the public on action items. Same rules apply to all two of you in the audience. If you would like to weigh in on our action items, please do. We invite you to. But please put your first and last name in the chat, or if you're here in person, fill out one of our beautiful colorful cards, and it must be under one of our action items, which all start with the number fourteen. I'll give it a minute or two. By a minute or two, I meant ten seconds. So, um, we're going to move on to item fourteen, our action items. And fourteen point two point one, we have a resolution, approval of resolution twenty three twenty four dash zero six of the Board of Education of us designating certain general funds as committed fund balance. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty three twenty four dash zero six.
I'll second.
All right, Amanda, can you tell us about this?
Perfect. Yes. Because we are in the Prop ninety eight minimum guarantee test one, two year, all reserves over ten percent of our restricted fund either need to be committed or we need a waiver from the county superintendent. Tonight, we bring forward this resolution to commit five hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars, which is above the ten percent for future needs. It's just a.
Profoundry. Yeah, we have to commit.
Yeah.
So we can just be really vague and say future needs?
Well, for additional economic uncertainties is what it's for. In addition to the three percent reserved by the state, and then the additional seven percent that we hold within our district.
Yeah. All right. If there are no other questions, all in favor? I, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, moving on to the purchase approval for model one commercial vehicle with modern, model one commercial vehicles in for, for all electric Ford Transit vans for our transportation department. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase.
All right, Amanda, do you want to tell us anything about these all-electric vans?
Yes, um, I'm, tonight we bring forward this purchase approval for the four vans to help with our transportation needs. As most are aware, we contract with First Student, which costs us quite a bit of money each year. That is contribution from our general fund. One of the ways we are trying to build our transportation department, we have currently five drivers and seventeen buses, is to hire driver trainers. And as they earn their school bus certificate, they can start driving for us in passenger vans. And this is one goal to get five, or excuse me, four more drivers on board. We have received delivery of the two, first two vans that were bought in last fiscal year, fiscal year, sorry. So we're super excited about this purchase.
And so, in, in other words, when we hire a, a new driver, any of us with a regular driver's license can go out and drive one of these nine passenger vans. So we know it takes between two and six months for a driver to go through the classwork needed and the behind-the-wheel training to drive a, a school bus. And so in the meantime, what are we, what are they doing? Well, they can go and they can do some smaller runs of up to nine students. They can, um, it, it gives us something for our, our new, our new hires to do as they're getting their certification. They can't even start to take back a route, because not all the routes have our full bus loads of students. We have a lot of students who need home-to-school transportation, students with, students with disabilities, that's what are primarily. We have a waiting list of about thirteen, fourteen students who are waiting to get transportation. These bus, these vans will allow us to start to cover the, the students who are not even being transported currently, that need to start getting transported. And as we expand this white fleet, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to see ten, fifteen, twenty of the vans, because thinking about some of the comments from the public from several meetings ago around transportation needs for athletics, for field trips, just having the vans available for, I mean, I think about, you know, the golf team, or volleyball team, or water polo team, when they're trying to go somewhere. Instead of, we don't, we don't want students transporting themselves or groups of students. I mean, we, I'd be much safer to tell a, a coach, the golf coach, or the water polo coach, to come and check out a van and be able to transport the whole team and come back. So it, it reduces the pressure on the larger, the larger buses. So this would be, in addition, we, we have one old diesel van. We have the two that we purchased last year that are the, the same exact vehicle, the model, the, um, the electric Ford Transit van, nine passenger. This will then, then give us four additional vans. That's what it's about.
Mike, Ellen, use your mic, please.
How many miles do they get on a charge?
One.
One forty.
One forty? Yeah, about one forty. So just like, you know, we have, so it's one, it is definitely a concern, it's definitely been a concern, something we've been talking about, thinking about. But when you think even going to Napa and back, I mean, just, just like, uh, you know, if we, the other option was we go with a, a diesel or a gas van. But we're, I know that board is very committed to, to this climate change resolution. I didn't want, I wanted to put on our electric vans that were committed to this. If you're going lot, much longer distances, I mean, you plug it in, we drove, we drove the first one. And right on the screen there, it says, here's your nearest electric charging station, and you can go in and do a rapid charge. And so just like a gas station, the, the golf team may have to wait, you know, thirty minutes while it does a rapid charge. But do that same thing with a gas station. So, anyway, but it, so it's about a hundred and forty. I don't know, I, I thought it was a little bit higher, but maybe it's if it's fully loaded down, a hundred and forty miles.
I think that was the furthest that the retailer had driven them. But he was never at a hundred percent empty, so they said comfortably to aim for that.
So these initially are for the bus trainees, right?
Yes.
Will they be available for coaches as well at some point?
So when we, when we get enough, when we get enough of them, so.
Do you have like a number in mind?
Well, I'd like to see fifteen or twenty, I don't know. So, I mean, I think we just, every year, it's not like we're going to go, we, we can't, we don't have the budget to just be throwing. Right. You know, we, we, we buy a few, a few a year until we get to a certain number. Our first priority is to, is to cover home-to-school transportation that we, that we're required, that's written into I E Ps that we need to cover. So we can start to take back some of those routes from the private company that's doing their, that is currently doing the routes. Once, once those are all covered, then we can talk about field trips and after-school sports. If after-school sports aligns with, part of it is after school, then we have to transport the students home. So if there's a, if the timing permits, we could look at, you know, having coaches take them out. Or it doesn't have to be just coaches, it could be performing arts group, or it could be a, you know, the, the decathlon. It could be any sort of a, a group from school that needs them. But we're not, we're not really close, some principals have been asking, so can we, when can we check out the vans? Like, we're not, we're not close, we haven't even, we're not even, we haven't covered what we need to cover for our students with, with disabilities. So as time goes on, I think we'll get there.
We're not buying directly from Ford, so I wouldn't abstain anyway. But I think Ford is one of the organizations that's actually talking and working with the U A W, so. The union supporter, I think.
And I think too, the, the reason that we're going with, so we, we talked about all sorts of different, you know, what other models are out there? I mean, from Mercedes, I tell you, Toyota, what's out, what is out there? And when you look at government contracts, we're, we're basically, the Mercedes was like double the price, so we said that was out. But we're, we're, we're buying an American-made, American-made vehicle, and we're piggybacking on a government contract. So which is why we're getting the lowest price out there.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? I, any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ed Services. We have an M O U approval between School Services of California and Petaluma City Schools for a special education study. Tony, do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Sure, um, to support our differentiated assistance and our, and our new goal in our L cap, the L cap committee added an action in there to support our special education program. And in that was to do a study or an audit with our special education program. And we were able to identify a provider that could do the study. And they would look at things like our budget expenditures, are we, you know, around transportation, or maintenance of effort, organizational effectiveness, are we implementing our policies and procedures effectively? Program structures, are they meeting the needs of our students? Staffing, are we staffed appropriately? Are we over, understaffed, depending on, on our number of our students? I know that we're over identified currently in compliance pieces with our I E P and state and federal compliances that we're required to, to ensure that we're in compliance of. The great thing about this study is that the, the Sonoma County Office is willing to pay for the study. So it really is a great opportunity for us to really have a third perspective on our program and our services to make sure that we are doing what might be best practices, and also finding out what we can do to continually impact our students and ensure they're, they have a successful outcome.
Absolutely. I forgot to get a motion. Can I get a motion real quick?
I move to approve the M O U between School Services and P C S for the special education study.
All right, now it's my move and seconded. We heard a little bit about it. Sorry, I went in the wrong order. Um, any questions or comments from any of the board members?
Will this, like the Aranda study, actually, when will it be done? And sorry if it's in there, I didn't read it thoroughly. And then, um, is it going to give recommendations like that study did as well?
Yeah, so I, we're hoping that the study could begin soon after board approval. We're, I think, hoping for some kind of results with recommendations by January or February. And, and from there, yeah, they, they should provide us with recommendations.
Thank you.
I, I have a request. This is a great scope, and it's, you know, totally aligned with goal five. And, you know, this, and I, I love its comprehensiveness, look at our special ed here. I also like that they're collecting data from, you know, a variety of categories of stakeholders, you know, from the teachers and the administrators. And, and it talks about a survey of parents. And my request is, if we can build in some opportunity for qualitative narrative data from the parents. In the post-pandemic era, I would say the heaviest amount of our email traffic that we get is with special ed. And it's with parents who are struggling with being strong advocates for their children. And I think a survey wouldn't, won't capture some of insights that we might miss. So I, I, I read the contract, and it sounds like there's some flexibility built in here. If we can ask them to, uh, you know, pick a few parents, you know, who could sit down for an interview or something like that. What do you think, Tony?
Yeah, so you, you, just to make sure I captured this right, an opportunity to get some qualitative, qualitative data with our parents.
From parents.
From parents.
Yeah, because we get it all the time. And I want you to, I want us to see it, uh, I want us all to see it, you know?
Yeah, definitely, we can put that request in.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor? I, any opposition, any abstention? Seeing none, we'll move on to item fifteen, comments from the public on discussion and information items. Again, please fill out one of our pretty cards if you're here in person, or put your first and last name in the chat, as well as which of the three discussion items you would like to speak about. We will not be voting on these items, they are discussion items for your information, which is why they're called discussion information only. All right. We will move on then to sixteen point one point one, the first reading of our amended board policy uniform complaint procedures. Matthew, do you want to explain it as the former assistant superintendent of H R?
So this, this first read, essentially the last time we updated this policy was in two thousand and eighteen. Laws have changed since two thousand and eighteen. And this brings, this is C S B A model language that really, that brings us into, into compliance with specifically which allegations, if there's a, if there's a uniform complaint against, against our district or its particular department, brings us in line with how we handle those. So essentially, which ones do we use this uniform complaint process, and which ones that we don't? And if, if we don't, who do we, which department do we refer it to, or which outside agency do we refer it to? So that's what it is.
Any questions or comments on this updated V P? Great, we'll move on to sixteen point one point two, our board member office hours. We are still working on scheduling all of those. I put my name in after these were published to the agenda, I'm sorry. So they're not the most up to date. So they're not the most up to date, but the good news is they're more filled in than they look on the agenda.
Good. And I think the first one's until November, so we got, we have a little time.
Looks like Maddie hasn't been able to fill in hers yet, so.
Yeah, and as long as we have one board member at each.
Yeah, we have three dates that we don't, but I'm following up with Maddie.
Perfect, so board member office hours will start in November, it sounds like.
So maybe, maybe if we can bring it, maybe we bring it back one more time. If there's, if there's any concerns, then once, once it's totally filled in, then we'll just publish it out so everyone knows the dates. Or we can just, we or this is.
I think we could just publish it out, I don't know that it needs to be officially approved.
It doesn't, no.
We haven't done that in the past.
Okay.
I I would encourage Jaden and Philip to set up like one or two days in the semester at your respective high schools for your peers to know that, hey, on this particular day at lunchtime or whatever time that works for you, come chat with us about anything on your mind that the board, you know, should pay attention to. That'd be super, I mean, when when we go to do our office hours, it's mostly parents and and staff. It's rarely students, but I suspect you guys would get a lot more student input.
And if you make it and schedule it and you want one of us to join you, we can see if any of us are free, because I can usually sneak away around lunchtime.
Ask Matthew to bring some snacks.
Yeah.
Yep.
Feed the children.
I'd be happy to come and join, you know, join you guys and I'll bring some snacks.
Food.
Yeah. I'm still food motivated, so I get it. Moving on to business services, first reading of another amended board policy about contracts. Amanda, can you tell us a little bit about this one?
Yes, tonight we bring forward amended board policy thirty three twelve for contracts. This was first brought approved by the board in October of two thousand and last revised in March of two thousand and six. Yes, so that is one of the reasons we are bringing it forward. But it's also to add language in order for us to change the way that we will be presenting contracts to in future board meetings, that it will all come on one document similar to an Excel that will have the contract name. With, you'll be able to click on it, there will be an attachment to the contract. It will have the amount, the purpose and some comments and the duration of the contract. And it will come under one act or one item in consent just for, so everybody always knows where to go in order to see where contracts are and it will be searchable just for clarity.
I like that, we're finally getting into the twenty first century.
Yeah.
It's exciting. Now that never happens with local government.
Transparent, just get, it's everything there all together.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Maybe I'm misreading this, I don't do legalese too well, but it's, it sounds like construction contracts are are exempted from this, is that? It says, the board shall approve or ratified contracts as follows, and then under the bolted list, it says, accept construction services, which seems.
So those are the contracts that need to be taken and open as an action item.
Yeah, oh, I see, okay.
So our capital facilities.
Okay.
No, they're typically larger, they go in under action, the rest of them would come under.
Okay, got it.
Great, sounds good, we'll move on to future business. I have one request, can we get an update on what's happening with our friends at Live Oak? Is anything like, how they doing on those fairgrounds, like?
Yep. Sure. Yeah, I thought, yeah, sure, you can do that.
Any other future?
Yeah, I'm trying to find if someone else has something going for it, but I'm just trying to find, I can't remember the name of it. But what I, the question or the request is to get an update on our electrification.
Yes.
Solar electrification, battery packs.
We're, we're, we're working on, we're working on it, so I shared, I shared with board members just a quick update. We have an annual, an annual review of our, so at all of our school sites, we have solar panels, cost savings. What would it, you know, what would our bill have been if we had just been relying on P G N E? What is it because, due to our solar, what, how is the efficiency of our solar system, so solar panel system? But we are going to bring, I'm sorry, our consultants to our verity and we'll, we've asked them to come to a board meeting.
To the October tenth board meeting, it's like you read my mind because I sent that email today.
Awesome, any other future business, anybody? Well, with that, we will adjourn at seven oh two P M. All right.